Good evening and welcome to our meeting. I'd like to turn to Board Member Linda Welborn to open us up. Thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting by remembering two students who passed away earlier this school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Nada Khalid and Josiah Gaines.
Join me in remembering Nada Khalid, a freshman student at Eastern High School. She was kind, she was beloved by friends, and she was a very sociable young woman. She was welcomed and loved by the staff, and she possessed a very friendly spirit. Nada was easygoing, not one to draw a lot of attention to herself, but she did always let others shine and have the spotlight. And yet, her life had a lot of light as well. She will be remembered as a bright student, a good person, and a beloved friend. We know Nada's presence and warm spirit will be missed at home and by family and in her community, but we want it known that it will also certainly be missed by her Eastern family as well, where her presence will remain and be felt, because as they say at Eastern, once a wildcat, always a wildcat.
Josiah Gaines was a student at Triangle Lake Montessori. The very first day that Josiah entered the school, his infectious light was present. Every morning, he stepped from the bus and entered the school with a huge smile and waved to his teacher the entire walk down the hallway to his classroom. His joy and eagerness to be at school was contagious and made him a joy to teach. Josiah was an inquisitive young boy, his infectious light was present.
He was eager to learn everything.
Every...
Josiah loved books and eagerly practiced his reading. At home, he enjoyed playing video games. His absence has left a hole in the heart of his teachers and school family, but they are blessed to have shared a little time, the little time they had with him, and chose to honor his memory by spreading light to others, just as Josiah did.
Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite any family members, any friends, any school representatives that are here. We'd like to offer our condolences. We want to continue by recognizing our March Employee of the Month, Ron Crudup. Will you please come to the podium? First impressions do count, and Alamance Elementary Custodian Ron Crudup understands that. He works hard to keep classrooms maintained, ensuring that students and staff have a clean and welcoming environment. However, Ron does more than the custodial duties require of him. "Mr. Ron consistently goes beyond the scope of his assigned duties to support students and staff," wrote music teacher Kay Pluth. "For example, he emptied a storage closet to remove a piano that had been barricaded since COVID, since the COVID shutdown. Others said it was too hard, but Mr. Ron took time to make the piano usable again. He came into my class this week and participated with the students in their music lesson. They love him dearly, and so do the staff. Mr. Ron is a great addition to our school." The staff at Alamance Elementary recognized his dedication to the students and school, leading to him being named Employee of the Month for March. A surprise, Ron entered a gymnasium full of cheering students and staff. One student's sign read, "We love you, and you are the best." Ron received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of March, your photo will be displayed here at the district's central offices, at Alamance Elementary, and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Linda Welborn to read aloud the certificate honoring Ron.
Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, presented to Ronald Crudup, Alamance Elementary for Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s, March 2024, signed by our Superintendent Whitney Oakley and our Chairwoman, Deana Hayes-Green.
She's going to bring that down to you. We'd like to, you know, invite you to say some words, and then afterwards, we want to shake your hand and anybody that's here with you, your family and school representatives, friends.
Well, I'm going to say it definitely caught me by surprise. No matter how much they tell me they appreciate me, it still caught me by surprise. But I just want to thank the staff, the teachers, and the kids. They always tell me they appreciate what I do, and I always like to make sure everyone's good. That's just me. That's just what I like to do. I don't know, I just, I just, I just love doing for the people. I really do. And I also want to extend my thank you to Irwin Montessori as well, because they too tell me they appreciate what I do as well. Yeah, I think that's it for me.
All right. Well, we'd like to take your hand and anyone that's here with you. So come on up. All right, we're going to keep going. Next, we're going to recognize our Volunteer of the Month for February, because they couldn't be here then. So would Mr. Charles Elder please come to the podium at this time? The Positive Ongoing Paternal Support, or POPS, volunteers have made a tremendous difference at Eastern High. POPS is an initiative close, is an initiative close aimed at creating a nurturing and positive environment for amazing scholars at Eastern High. POPS is about fostering a sense of support, affirmation, and ensuring a strong male presence in the school community. Mr. Charles Elder is one of the founding POPS volunteers. He stands in the foyer with his radiant smile to greet our students in the mornings. When time allows, he walks around during transition periods between classes to offer an encouraging word to students. Mr. Elder is constantly assisting us at Eastern High with recruiting additional males to participate in our POPS initiative. Charles is kind, consistent, and dedicated to our students. "His desire to support our school has been shown in many ways, and we're grateful to have his support," says Cinnamon Johnson, youth development coordinator at Eastern High who nominated Charles. As the February 2024 Volunteer of the Month, Mr. Elder was surprised with a $50 gift card courtesy of Toyota of Greensboro, and during the month of February, your photo will be on display in the district's central office, Eastern High, and Toyota of Greensboro. So tell your friends to go buy a car, go look for one, see your picture. At this time, I'd like to call on Board Member Linda Welborn, she's two for two tonight, to present you with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the board.
Hello. Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, presented to Charles Elder, Eastern Guilford High, for Volunteer of the Month, February 2024, signed by our Superintendent Whitney Oakley and our Chairwoman, Deana Hayes. It's amazing to see these wonderful role models, and it's amazing how you don't know how you touch children. And you may not find out for a long time until one of them come back. So what you're doing is awesome, and we appreciate it.
And after you're presented with this, we would like to hear from you and also congratulate you and whoever's with you.
Dr. Harris, I would just like to say thank you to the board, thank you to the whole committee, and also to Dr. Harris and to Ms. Cinnamon for having this, having this program, for the parents to come in and to support the teens and the youth. I think it's a very, very supportive program, and it's really changed how the children coming in from when we first started it, you know, because I always make them give me a fist bump. I'll chase them down, and, you know, and the thing is, is from the beginning, a lot of them would be resistant, but a lot of them now, when they come in, they say, "Hey, POPS!" And, you know, to give us the fist bump, and we even give the teachers fist bumps. So it's changing the culture of the children to know that when they walk off the bus, sometimes they may be having a bad day, and we're there to greet them. And yes, I'm always recruiting, trying to recruit more parents, more fathers to come in and support the program. And I think, and I thank Mr. Harris and I thank Ms. Cinnamon for bringing this program alive in Eastern Guilford.
Well, thank you, and we want to thank you too, and anyone that's here with you. All right. Next, we will recognize our Volunteer of the Month for March. Would Ms. Julie Buchanan please come to the podium at this time? Ms. Buchanan started volunteering at Cone Elementary five years ago. During the COVID-19 school closures, she took it upon herself to read to students. When Cone reopened for staff and students, but volunteers and visitors weren't allowed in the school, she met with students outside while social distancing to encourage them. She has connected Cone to the other volunteer organizations, baked goods for staff appreciation events, coordinated doctor's appointments and transportation with families for students she works with, and brings her teenage daughters to also help when their school schedule allows. Weekly, we see Ms. Julie in and around Cone still. She sees a need, asks a staff member if she can help, and then she makes it happen. She is an amazing person, and her support has been invaluable for those that she's worked with and impacted thus far, says Dr. Shannon Peoples, principal at Cone Elementary who nominated Julie. As Volunteer of the Month for March, Julie was surprised with a $50 gift card courtesy of Toyota of Greensboro, and during the month of March, your photo will be on display here at the central offices, at Cone Elementary, and at Toyota of Greensboro. At this time, I'd like to call on Board Member Deborah Napper to present Ms. Buchanan with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the board.
And may I just say that a recommendation from Dr. Peoples is high praise, high praise. The Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition is presented to Julie Buchanan from Cone Elementary School for Volunteer of the Month for March of 2024.
Thank you.
We'd like to hear from you.
I had to write it down. So I just want to thank you all so much for having me and for honoring me this award, and I have to thank Dr. Peoples, who has been so welcoming and kind to me from the beginning, and she is appreciative of any little thing that is done for her school family. I also want to thank, send a huge thank you to Ms. Deloach in second grade and Ms. Neese in fourth, because they share their students with me. I have been overwhelmed at how one's heart can feel so full doing something so simple. From my initial experience in a first-grade classroom, my perspective changed. My eyes were suddenly open. I loved kids, but working with them was not on my radar. I met five- and six-year-olds who were curious, funny, mostly wild, but incredibly loving. I had no clue how to help them with their challenges. Eureka math was even over my head. I had no experience with education, but my best friend, who's a teacher, said, "Just encourage and affirm them whenever you can." Well, I have never received so many hugs as I have at Cone Elementary, and I am certain that the Lord directed my steps straight to this school, and I will be forever grateful. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. We'd like to shake your hand and anyone that's here with you, family, friends, representatives from the school. We see your principal here. All right, we are now at public comments, and we only have two speakers signed up this evening. We would like to remind our speakers that you have three minutes to make your comments. After, when you have 15 seconds left, an amber light will come on, and when the red light comes on, you are, time is up. We would like you to wrap up your comments so that the next speaker is able to begin with their comments. We ask that you not name any staff or student by name. If there's some assistance that you need, we will, we have someone here that will meet you in the lobby to, to support you. And if there's anybody in the audience that agrees and supports with what you're saying, we'd like you to demonstrate that by doing this, so that their comments can continue uninterrupted. The first speaker is Jenna Clements, followed by our final speaker, Cherry Pickett. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Jenna Clements, you're Ms. Greensboro's teen 2024, and I attend Northwest, Northwest Guilford High School. I am here today to share with you the importance of service learning, how we as teenagers can make a difference in our communities. I've spent many hours volunteering with JDRF, Guilford Backpack Ministry, the Helping Heroes Club, and also Operation Christmas Child, and have been able to see what a smile and a helping hand and the willingness to support each other can do for so many. There are many benefits of service learning. Students can stay connected with what they're learning in the real world, when, while meeting community needs. Develop an awareness of community needs and create an understanding of the civic value, responsibility, develop a communication with networking skills, and develop empathy and critical values, and enhance critical thinking and problem-solving skills through active learning. As a part of my reign as Ms. Greensboro's teen, I would also like to share with you my community service initiative. Type one to type none. Almost six years ago, a little girl's life was changed due to a medical diagnosis that no one saw coming. That little girl was my sister. She was diagnosed with type one diabetes and is the second most common autoimmune disorder found in children, and it's not caused by any lifestyle choices. I share this with you to bring awareness and continue funding research, educating people on the misconceptions of type one diabetes, and finding a cure. My sister was diagnosed at the end of April in her kindergarten year. She is now in sixth grade. In elementary school, her teachers, nurses, and my parents also helped educate her classmates on the autoimmune disease. They read books, passed out materials to help them understand that she didn't have it just because she ate too much sugar, and helped them educate her symptoms off of what her sugar was, too high or too low. Going into middle school, there was a lot of new faces and a lot of new misconceptions. This time, she took initiative by creating a PowerPoint to present to her classmates, so they understood what type one diabetes is. My goal is to get, get into schools and help educate families on the type one diabetes and, and, and the symptoms. Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation has helped my family in a big way with support, education, and meeting new families living with type one. One day, with the help of JDRF, we will find a cure to end type one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and congratulations. And our final speaker, Cherry Pickett?
Good evening. I wanted to thank you that you get my name exactly right. Does anyone know who the oldest living person in the United States is? A beautiful black woman named Elizabeth Francis, who is 114. She was born in Louisiana in 1909, but now lives in Houston, Texas, according to longevityquest.com. Her sister lived to 106, and her daughter is 94. And Mrs. Francis believed in early to bed, early to rise, work hard, go home, make a nutritious meal, and do right by God and family. Now, the oldest person in North Carolina is Mrs. Catherine Farrell, another black woman. She was born in Warsaw in North Carolina. She lives in Durham at the age of 111, and I believe she currently is still living. Her mother lived to 95. She said that she does not recall bitterness between races while growing up in Warsaw. And as a teenager, she played on her school basketball team and graduated class valedictorian from the Frederick Douglass High School. She is active in her church and has, and had three children. Now, how did these super centenarian women live such long productive lives without a social-emotional learning or a D E I worker telling them what to think, what to do, or what to believe, or telling them that they are victims in a white society less likely to succeed? As the Guilford County School Diversity Equity Inclusion Director said in an interview, that young black women, women and their newborn babies are likely to die during or after birth because of stress. How did all the black moms or any color of women survive birth 100 years ago? I worked as an RN taking care of mothers and babies after birth in a hospital. We used to talk about how strong the black babies were. If perinatal deaths are up now, could it be complications from COVID vaccines, drug use, mental illness, or just poor decisions? Our schools can do better without a D E I office. That only tells half-truths to staff and students, plus save millions of dollars. The D E I director makes over $100 a year. As the oldest woman in North Carolina said, "The Lord brought us here, and He is going to take us away, and we ought to learn to live and love together." And I agree. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments for the evening. We are now at approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve or amend the agenda? Can you turn on your mic, Diane?
I hope I can. Motion to amend the agenda. The personnel report, there's an amendment to that, and also is an amendment for an action item?
Yes.
An amendment for an action item.
Yeah, an action item on real property.
On real property.
Is that second? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'll turn to you, Diane, for the motion on the action item.
You want to go ahead and do it now?
Yeah, hold on just a minute. I want to provide a little bit of context for that, and to say that we have an exciting announcement and an exciting opportunity for the district, and I'd like to really invite Dr. Julius Monk to share some of the highlights of this exciting update.
All right. Thank you, Chair Hayes, and good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Oakley. GCS has been presented with an opportunity to purchase a building in our community without resorting to the use of bond funds, and it's below the amount that we were anticipating as a part of our facilities master plan as we work with the county commissioners on our joint venture. The ITG property has been offered to GCS at a very, very reasonable price of $9.5 million. The site is approximately 7.7 acres and 144,000 square feet. This will allow us to accommodate with a capacity of over 400 employees. This property is located right off of Wendover Avenue. It is centrally located, and is nearly moving ready with just a few minor upfits that we need to do. Proceeds from the sale of properties currently in use by our non-school-based staff will be used to replace these funds that we're receiving from the county for both the purchase of the building and for its upfits. By selling the district's real estate on Eugene Street, Washington Street, Market Street, Prescott Street, and Laughlin and Summerfield, the district will be returning those properties to the county's tax base, which could be used for various properties, projects, including commercial and real estate developments. All these properties, all five properties, were either built in the 50s, 60s, or 70s, which were predating the merger between Guilford County Schools, High Point Schools, and, and Greensboro City Schools. And so with that, we are making this recommendation before you today.
Thank you, Dr. Monk. Now, I will turn to Board Member Bellamy Small for a reading of the motion.
I move that we authorize our staff and attorneys to exercise the option to purchase real property located at 714 Green Valley Road, formerly known as the ITG Building, consisting of 7.69 acres, and more particularly described in Exhibit A record, recorded at Platbook 120, page 72, in the Office of Register of Deeds. For the purchase price of $9,500,000, subject to negotiation, negotiated escrow, and other reserves, closing costs, customary prorations of taxes and utilities, and contingent on the approval of the Guilford County, the Guilford Board of County Commissioners, as to the price to be paid for real property as required by NCGS 115C-426, parentheses F, parentheses 6, and that this action be forwarded to the county commissioners for consideration at their next meeting for approval, and for the issuance of a project ordinance in the amount of $11 million.
Thank you. Is there a second? Let's see, I can just go down the list. Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
And Diane?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. I'll turn to Board Member Pratt.
Good evening. I am going to read the, now that we have signed off on this, the Interlocal Agreement Regarding the Purchase and Funding for a GCS Central Office Site. Whereas the Guilford County Board of Education, GCS, and the Guilford County Board of Commissioners, the Commissioners, have worked on a joint capital plan for purchasing, repairing, replacing, and modernizing the buildings and facilities of the Guilford County Board of Education. And whereas included in the planning was the consolidation- And whereas included in the planning was the consolidation of the central offices of GCS, and the parties allocated an estimate of $30 million for that purpose. And whereas GCS has located and is in a position to acquire certain property located at 714 Green Valley Road, consisting of approximately 7.69 acres, formerly known as the ITG Building, the GV site, with a purchase price of $9.5 million, far below the expected cost of such a facility. And whereas the GV site includes significant technology, including security, equipment, and furnishings, which are of value to GCS, and the cost of upfitting the GV site for use by GCS is not expected to exceed $1.5 million, although the precise number is not yet known. And whereas the purchase of the GV site will facilitate the disposition of other properties currently in use by GCS's offices, including sites referred to as Laughlin Elementary School, Eugene Street, Washington Street, Prescott Street, and Market Street, more particularly described in Attachment A here, too. And whereas GCS and the commissioners have agreed, in lieu of using bond funds to purchase the GV site, that the commissioners will provide the funds to purchase and outfit the GV site, and GCS will declare the properties in Attachment A surplus when they are no longer used, and relinquish any funds from the sale or disposition of the properties described in Attachment A for the replenishing of county funds up to the amount of the purchase price of the GV site, and any upfitting funds provided by the commissioners. And that such sale proceeds will be paid to the commissioners within 10 days of the closing on each of the properties described in Attachment A. Now, therefore, it is hereby agreed to as an interlocal agreement that the Guilford County Board of Commissioners will provide the funding for the purchase and upfitting of the GV site, and GCS commits to relinquish a sum equal to the actual funds provided by the commissioners specifically for the purchase and upfitting of the GV site by relinquishing the amounts recouped from GCS from the sale or disposition of the properties in Attachment A to the county commissioners.
Move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, I can start down here. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. That passes unanimously. So we're very excited about this, and, you know, Betty will, I know, central office staff, all of our staff who's all over the places. We have 21 acres of older buildings, as Dr. Monk said, not only putting property and resources back in the tax base, but consolidating our operations for efficiency and better coordination. So we're all excited that this opportunity just, you know, was an incredible opportunity for us. So we're excited about that. So thank you very much. We are now at the consent agenda. I'll turn to you, Dr. Oakley.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. A, approval of February 2024 meeting minutes. B, the Personnel Action Report and Addendum to the Personnel Action Report. C, the 2324 Budget Amendments and Transfer Report. D, Class Size Update and Waiver Request. E, Summer Readministration and Extended Enrichment Program. And F, Contractual Agreement with Modular Technologies for the Mobile Classroom Purchase at Gibsonville Elementary School. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Michael?
Remove what?
So, Item F, is there anything else? I hadn't received any, no, any requests. Have anything pulled? All right, so this is Items A through E. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. So Items A through E pass unanimously. Mr. Logan, Item F?
One question on this, not that I'm disagreeing on the purchase price of it, but when we do the purchase of this mobile unit, who will be responsible for the upkeep and repairs for this unit?
We would. Guilford County Schools.
Is that the normal practice within Guilford County Schools to do the updating and repairs to mobile units?
Yes. If we own them, yes.
Okay. I would like to state something. Northwest Community raised approximately $1.5 million to replace the roofs on theirs, and the community paid for the replacement of those roofs. So I would like for us to have fair and equitable repairs on the mobile units in Guilford County. And that also goes with the Early College at Guilford for having to raise money to do repairs on their mobile units.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to accept? Item F?
Move Item F.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Kim?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Dina, yes. That passes unanimously. We are now at reports.
Madam Chair, do you want me to do the?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I thought you included that. I think it was gonna...
Well, but I didn't say what it was, and I don't know if you need that.
It was just a personality. I think I can turn to Dr. Oakley, and you can add...
I can do it in my comments.
Okay, she'll do it in her comments. I'm looking for my comments. But thank you. So, good evening. The transportation request form will open for the 242025 school year on April the 8th, and it will close on May 31st. To assist parents with this process, the Transportation Department will be hosting parent fairs in May. So for more details, visit our website at www.gcsnc.com/transportation. March is School Social Workers Month, and we want to express our support for our dedicated social workers. The social work team surprised some of their staff with lunch and balloons to celebrate the occasion. Social workers bridge the gap between students, families, and communities, and ensure that our children have what they need to be successful in school. That's Chair Jenkins. March is also Women's History Month. We are very proud of the many women who have shaped Guilford County Schools. We have nine schools named for women, including Christine Green Education Center, Haynes and Men Education Center, Herb and Metz Education Center, Doris Henderson Newcomers School, Kearns Academy, Sylvia Mendez Newcomers School, Peck Elementary, Ragsdale High, and Sternberger Elementary. Although there is much more work to do to lift up the voices of so many women who have made tremendous contributions to public schools. You can watch a video about these pioneering women on our YouTube channel. Guilford Parent Academy also has a presentation about famous female leaders on its website, and that's located at gcsnc.com-parentacademy. On Friday, the Literacy Department and the American Indian Education Department will host a virtual assembly to support students who are learning about Native American history as part of their language arts curriculum. We love to see our departments working together to support student learning and broadening their understanding of culture. And Monday, April 15th, is Bring Your Legislator to Work Day. Elected officials from across the state will visit their local schools to see what our public education has to offer, and we look forward to welcoming our delegation to that event and showcasing our talented students and staff. This concludes my remarks. Thank you, Dr. Oakley.
Good evening. I would first like to congratulate Tyler Beck, who will be serving as Chief Financial Officer, Marcy Beard, who will be serving as Principal Supervisor, Charnell Shepherd, who will be serving as Principal of Kernodle Middle School. Longtime-serving Principal Thea McCam will be transferring to a vacancy at an early middle college. So congratulations to these appointees this evening. March is Arts in Our Schools Month also, and we want to celebrate the creativity of our students and staff display through arts. We are proud to be named one of the Best Communities for Music Education by the NAM Foundation, a support organization of the National Association of Music Merchants. GCS has held this distinction for six years, and we plan to continue investing in and growing our students' artistic talents. We would love to share student artwork on our social media channels. Please share images and details with good news at gcsnc.com. Kindergarten registration is now open, and families are encouraged to register now for the upcoming school year. To help families register and get acquainted with their new schools, a district-wide kindergarten kickoff is scheduled for Wednesday, April 10th. Check with your school or visit our district website in the coming weeks to find specific times to visit toward the school and just learn more about what kindergarten will be like. Students who attend will also receive a welcome gift. Students who attend Murphy, Wiley, Archer, and Swan are invited to visit their new schools this spring. Information about these transition nights has been shared with families, and more information is available on those school websites. Congratulations to our district Battle of the Books teams. This year, 62 teams competed in a preliminary round to determine the 25 teams that will compete for the district title. Winners were Oak Ridge Elementary, Kaiser Middle, and Early College at Guilford, and they will move on to compete at the regional level. Spring break is coming soon, and we want our students to keep reading. Students who read at least 300 minutes between March 23rd and April 1st will earn an invitation to the Greensboro Bound Literary Festival and will be entered into a drawing for a $25 gift card to Scuppernong Books. Thank you. This concludes my remarks.
All right. Now, Technology of...
Yes, Dr. Slade will come and present a high-level overview of the Technology Department and current devices. Dr. Slade, welcome.
Well, good evening, Superintendent Oakley, Madam Chair Hayes, and esteemed board members. This evening's update will be going over, technology is where we currently stand. We'll be covering things such as the national technology landscape, an overview of the Technology Services Department's structure. I'll be sharing information pertaining to the district's one-to-one, device issuance, and as well as the issuance for 202425. As part of the noted next steps, an update will be shared on the deferred maintenance projects, and I'll also be providing the update on the remaining ESER plan. Finally, I'll be briefly highlighting the state of cybersecurity across the country before outlining next steps for technology at GCS. I want to start by acknowledging the transformative impact technology has had on education, particularly in recent times. From enhancing learning experiences to improving administrative efficiency, technology has become an indispensable tool in our educational toolkit. However, as we delve into the realm of technology and education, we also address some pressing challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. The impact of ESER cannot be overstated. These funds have provided us with unique opportunity to invest in technology upgrades that have a lasting impact on our student learning outcomes. GCS has leveraged ESER funds wisely to bridge the digital divide. We've enhanced access to quality education, and we've prepared our students for success in an increasingly digital world. As we look into the future, it's clear that technology will continue to play a pivotal role in education. To stay ahead of this curve, we must carefully and fully understand and embrace emerging technologies, such as artificial intelligence, new student information systems, and business modernization systems. These technologies have the potential to revolutionize education by personalizing learning experiences, identifying at-risk students early, and providing valuable insights to our educators. So on this slide, one of the significant challenges we faced is the ongoing labor shortage in education. The shortage of qualified teachers and staff has put a strain on our resources and has highlighted the need for innovative solutions. Technology can help play a pivotal role in addressing this challenge by providing personalized learning experiences, automating administrative tasks, and enabling remote collaboration. With approximately 71 full-time staff positions, Technology Services functions as one unit that focuses on various areas of IT expertise. So on the left side of the diagram, you'll see the structure of the IT Security and Support Team. Now, this team includes our technology support technicians, our audiovisual staff, our customer service, our educational technology team, IT security, asset and deployment, and project management. The 27 members in the dark blue that are highlighted, those are the staff that the district sees in schools and in central offices on a daily basis. With 27 staff members, that ratio nearly equates to one technician to 3,700 students and staff. Now, if you look on the right side of the diagram, that lists our Enterprise Operations Team, which consists of our infrastructure, our network, our systems programmers, and our telecommunications teams. Overall, Technology Services has seen improvement in the recruitment and retention efforts for this school year. The majority of technology staff are classified and are thankful for the salary increase that you as a school board approved, along with the work of the county commissioners. In March 2023, the department was operating at 74% staff capacity, with vacancies in several key areas. Currently, the department is operating at 89%. Again, we want to say thank you to the board and the county commissioners because we truly appreciate the support in all that you do. During the pandemic, technology was an essential purchase to ensure students had access to devices. Their devices also connect them to the real world, provide them with resources at their fingertips, and prepare them for the future workplace. We know how technology is evolving, and we know that our students are digital natives. They've grown up with technology, so for them to use it in the classroom is an extension of what they do in the real worlds outside of school. In order for our students to be locally and globally competitive, it's vitally important that we have technology tools that our teachers have access to these devices as an instructional tool. So as we talk about the technological growth, the pandemic catapulted the technology growth in GCS. Prior to COVID, GCS was not a one-to-one district, which means there was not a device for all students and all staff. During the pandemic, school districts across the country had to shift to one-to-one. With no, they shifted from one-to-one, and GCS was no exception during this time. This resulted in 86,000 devices being purchased to support with no change in full-time Technology Services staff. Due to this growth, the network and server demands also increased. However, the current IT infrastructure is set up to support that increase. The device count tripled, resulting in greater deployment demands on our IT staff and device management efforts of our media coordinators at the school. IT and library media services staff work directly with media coordinators with help desk ticket support and troubleshooting, and assistance with end-of-year device storage More devices equate to more help desk tickets. Nonetheless, operational efficiency has remained consistent, thanks to the hard work of the support technicians and partnerships with technical assistance partners that assist with our pickup and our repair services. It's important to note that the device surplus that we have and our repair services ensure that devices are replaced without loss of instruction. In regard to student and staff devices, devices were purchased for all students and staff during the pandemic at a total cost of $39.1 million. The cost included the devices, the warranties, the setup, the delivery, and the ongoing support and repair. A blend of federal, state, and local funds were used to purchase these devices, and we were able to increase our purchasing power when Guilford County purchased devices to take advantage of the sales tax refund. Under the established instructional model, iPads were issued to students in kindergarten through third grade, and Chromebooks were issued to students in grades four through 12. As you can see here, the warranty expiration is quickly approaching on these devices, which we will review in the next slide. The extended warranties cover our hardware, the device, the defects in the material and workmanship, and the accidental damage protection. When warranted devices are collected for repair, there's no lapse of access while the damaged device is being repaired. Students are provided with a surplus device, and the damaged device is repaired and returned to the school for future use. A cost example, as if we did not have warranties on these devices. So based on January to December 2023, 22,530 Chromebooks were repaired during that calendar year. That's a 34% damage rate. If warranties were not active on these Chromebooks, that would have cost the district $2.6 million in repairs alone. Additional one-year warranty options are being explored to cover these devices through the fall of 2025. As we move forward in the future, we must continue to provide relative guidance and lessons on device use and care to minimize the damage rate for continued access. For 202425, GCS will remain as a one-to-one district. We'll be using the devices that are currently assigned, the devices in surplus, and the devices purchased with our remaining ESSR funds. GCS IT is developing a life cycle replacement plan for two thousand twenty-five and beyond. This plan will help build a financially sustainable one-to-one device program that involves stakeholder input on the device choice, inventory assessment, and a recommendation for device management and disposal. Looking ahead, GCS should remain to aim to embrace technology as an integrational part of educational ecosystem. This involves fostering a digital infrastructure that ensures equitable access to technology for all students and providing continuous professional development for our educators. Our journey into the digital age includes upgrades from the deferred maintenance bond, the utilization of ESSR funds, and growing our level of IT maturity, along with increasing our cybersecurity posture and ensuring our work aligns to the strategic direction to have a positive impact on student success. An update on the deferred maintenance projects. As part of the two thousand twenty-two deferred maintenance bond projects, technology improvements are underway. This includes the installation of interactive panels in our classrooms with built-in computers, wireless keyboards and mice, webcams for cross-classroom collaborations, and professional learning for staff. Installation of these learning aids began in January at ten of our high schools. Communication upgrades, including upgrades to the paging and intercom systems, are scheduled to begin in April. An infrastructure analysis is currently being conducted through June. This analysis will identify the highest needs of network improvement for optimum operability. Some of our remaining ESSR funds will be used to purchase technology for student devices. In order for our students to be locally and globally competitive, it is vitally important that they have technology tools and our teachers have access to these devices. We're very much aware of the fiscal cliff that districts will face when ESSR funds expire. This fiscal cliff refers to the funds, the funding gap that schools and districts will have to make up when these funds are no longer available. Districts across the country are facing this harsh truth, and GCS is in that same predicament. According to a two thousand twenty-three national survey from the Consortium for School Networking, also known as COSIN, sixty percent of respondents are worried that they'll be unable to sustain device access post-ESSR. Forty percent worry about their ability to renew district licenses for software. More than a third are concerned about sustaining their current staffing levels. And twenty percent are worried about sustaining broadband access. IT staff are staying connected and involved with national and state agencies as it pertains to post-ESSR practices and post-ESSR sustainability. Cybersecurity continues to rank as the number-one concern for education technology leaders nationally. GCS IT is strengthening their IT security posture to keep students and staff safe in a digital learning environment. Enhancements have been made to improve GCS's IT security stance. Specifically, we've structured our department to include a focus on IT security, governance, and cybersecurity. We've recruited and promoted staff in that area to help monitor, maintain, and address security vulnerabilities. We've conducted security awareness campaigns, and we're implementing other best practices for improving our security measures. As we move forward, we're embarking on a path that not only addresses our immediate concerns, but also positions GCS as a leader in leveraging technology for the betterment of education. This is possible through the priorities and commitments outlined in our strategic direction. Specifically for technology, supporting the technological tools for accessible and interactive experiences to accelerate learning. We're continuing to build a culture where Guilford County Schools is the best place to work and learn, continuously improving the IT security posture to keep our students and staff safe in a digital learning environment. And we're preparing students for the world by designing apprenticeships and internship opportunities in various areas of IT, including cybersecurity, programming, networking, and project management, to name a few. We believe these opportunities will give students hands-on learning, practical skill development, mentorship, and a direct pathway to employment. By strategically combining these goals, technology will contribute to fostering the growth and significantly enhancing our mission to students succeed to succeed in a higher education or in the career of their choice. In closing, I want to highlight the Technology Services Team members for the work that they provide on a daily basis. In a very short time, GCS has moved from being suppliers of information to strategically planning for modern IT advancements due to the work of this team. I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to witness firsthand the work they put in on a daily basis. We're excited to continue our efforts in supporting the technological needs of our stakeholders in Guilford County Schools. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the technology in GCS.
Thank you. Diane?
Hadn't even gotten my hand up yet.
I knew it was coming.
Okay. You ready, Dr. Slade?
I'm ready.
All right. On page four, I just wondered, could you tell us what your overall budget is approximately?
Staff budget included?
Your overall budget?
Overall budget is about, staff and operational is about thirty with staff salaries included.
Thirty what?
Million.
Okay. How much do you need? You don't ask, you don't get.
I will ask. And I will ask by, what we're doing right now is doing a comprehensive study about what we truly need in the department. And I'll be coming with that with our life cycle replacement plan in addition to the additional staffing needs that may be required.
You got any idea? Or you don't want to say?
I don't want to say now. I want to bring the real numbers to you, and we're putting that together.
Okay. All righty. My next question is, on page seven. It's not really, well, this isn't a question. This is a kudos. I think we need to recognize our media specialists because they, you know, they're supposed to be our media specialists, but they are a significant part of supporting technology in their schools and did during the pandemic because a lot of them had to do the troubleshooting when there was someone else to help. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So I think we need to, Madam Superintendent, just say thank you very much because they feel like they're not paid attention to. And Media Specialist, I want you to know, I see you, I hear you, and we want to say thank you very much. Next is, do you know what your rate of loss of devices is?
So as part of this comprehensive inventory study we're doing now, we'll have that answer at the beginning, end of this year.
All right. How do you, or do you participate in recycling, reuse, re-thoris as far as our device? Because, you know, you hear that these things wind up, you know, going in the landfill, which is not where they need to be or go. So how, do we do that? Do we recoup anything if we do it?
There are buyback options available. So when we purchased devices during the pandemic, those devices are still active. Once they become end-of-life, there are buyback options for Apple and for our Chromebook devices as well. So as part of that life cycle plan that's being developed, we'll be able to estimate the amount that we'll be able to receive back based off the resale of those devices. But as of now, we have not had to do a buyback program.
Okay, because I think our environmentalists would be very curious to know, you know, what we're doing in that regard because I think I got an email today where somebody said we needed to take devices out here. Out of the, that they were polluting something. I'm not sure what, but, you know. So we do have people who are concerned about that. Partnerships. I would assume that our cable provider is one of our users, right? Or we use them, right?
You said the cable provider, like Spectrum?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there some kind of partnership with them since we are, I'm sure, a high user of their services?
To what extent?
Either, you know, helping us, I mean, you know, I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but, you know.
So we are looking into some of the broadband home internet access options to help students. And part of that does require a, it did require a RFP process. And with that, we were able to connect and partner with Lumos in High Point. And they also provide some service in the Greensboro area. So right now, we are partnering with Lumos in that aspect. In response to the RFP, they won the bid out on that.
What about some of the computer? Are we not, who we purchase our devices from? Is there, you know, some support or partnership with them?
Yeah, so not with Spectrum directly.
Not with Spectrum, but like, do we use like Lenovo?
We use Lenovo and devices that are on state contract.
Yeah.
We do purchase devices based off of that.
Okay. And are we also looking at our own students who are at either Kern's Academy or, you know, as far as internships or trying to recruit, you know? I mean, I realize we can't compete particularly with the the commercial market, but, you know, or do we try to maximize our use with our kids since we have the CTE programs that are trying to, you know, train them?
Yeah, so that was part of the preparing students for the world. We have tried to establish that connection with our CTE team and create these opportunities, these apprenticeships, and these internships for our students so they can get some of this home, hands-on experience while they're in school.
Is it possible, Madam Superintendent, that we could look at even being a part of GAF?
There's current discussions underway about how we can connect, and so, we certainly can explore it.
I mean, I just want to make sure that we, you know, that we benefit from what we are doing with the kids. And then my last one is not a question, but I just wanted to tell you, thank you for this. I think it's important that you recognize your staff and that they know that GCS is one of the best places to work. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael, then Chrissy, then Kim, then Deborah.
Thank you. You have, your department has saved me several times through the years, so thank you. Training for educators on new technology. I know we're throwing new technology out at the high schools, and some of it's coming out in the middle of the year. And I have had several educators express concerns of, I have something, I love it, I don't know how to use it. And I just want to make sure that we can get that addressed in the training options for the teachers and make sure that we have time as a board to allow the teachers to have the training for that. Second question on cybersecurity and software. Can you give a little bit of detail within that as far as cybersecurity?
I will say this, without sharing too much about the security of our infrastructure. We have now formed a full team. We have a director of IT security. We have a supervisor of IT security. We have user support of IT security. We have a senior sys admin. So we've developed this, which is not common in school districts. Typically, across the nation, you may have one person that serves as your cybersecurity contact. So coming into the department, that's what we had, was one person. So we work closely with the state, and they have a lot of resources, a lot of backup options and continuity options that we are engaging with.
Now, one more quick question on the software, on the security. Does it block access to websites that students go to?
So we have a filtering system that we can block various websites or resources.
And that would be pornographic material, correct?
That's correct.
So we have software on the computers that we provide parents that will block pornographic material?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Chrissy, then Kim, and Deborah.
Hit the wrong button, sorry. All right, I have a whole bunch of questions. First one, I'm going to piggyback on Mr. Logan's question because I had the same question about security blockers, approved sites, that whole kind of thing. And I do know that there are, of course, parental concerns about can my child access this site or that site? So if those filters that we do have in place are catching things, what's, as much as you can speak to it, what's the next step once we receive that information? Are parents contacted? Are administrators contacted? Are students flagged in some way to kind of see what's going on? So what happens with that?
Not for the blocked site itself. If they try to go to a site that's blocked, it's just going to give the message of being blocked. Now, if it's a, something that goes through our, a separate system about harmful acts or things like that, those are redirected to the appropriate staff. But just going to inappropriate sites, it's just going to, the filtering system itself will just block it.
And with that filtering, you have to be proactive about that because you're specifically blocking particular sites, right? You're not blocking something broadly?
Yeah, it's mostly blocked, and then we'll get a lot of requests of, hey, can you unblock it? And then we have a committee that reviews the
Case by case kind of thing. Is social media blocked on school devices? I mean, I know students have phones, of course.
That's right. On GCS filtered devices, yes.
Okay. Are we still having the issues that we were having with chargers? With chargers being lost and students not being able to charge their equipment?
That is a national issue. That's not a GCS-only. And when I've looked at the numbers, yes, so we do have lots of charges that are lost or stolen or repaired. So we have been fortunate with ESSR to be able to replace those. But, you know, that could be in jeopardy once ESSR runs out and that goes into that ability to be able to, you know, tell students how to take care of things and keep up with things because right now, it's a lot that's being utilized.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like we need additional education for students, and it's hard because kids are kids and they're going to be hard on equipment. We know that. But you talked about, you know, the number of damaged devices being, I think you said around thirty-four percent, somewhere in that range. So I'm glad to hear that you're working on a plan to teach them about the importance of not losing their chargers and not breaking their devices, that sort of thing.
And I think people would blame smaller kids first, but it's really the middle school age.
Yep. That doesn't surprise me at all, having spent a lot of time with those kids. Thumbs up for your life cycle plan. I really liked that. Also, for internship kind of opportunities with our students, I think that's super important. Do we add any assisted technology software to our devices so that students are able to, you know, dictate text or hear things read to them that type of thing?
Yes, especially in some of our classrooms, those requests come across, and we can help install those and make sure they're accessible.
So if someone has a particular need for that, they can reach out? Excellent. And one more question, which I think is sort of split for you and Dr. Oakley. And this has just been a particular professional interest to me in my other life, has been the integration of AI into the educational world is massive. So sort of two questions around that. The first one is more for you about, do we have any software or anything that we can provide to teachers that will help them to be identifying content that students are submitting that has been AI-generated? What kind of support do we have for the teachers with that?
Right now, we don't. You know, AI is a national trend, and it's a really, it's ahead of where we are.
It's very new, and it's growing very fast.
So I think the proper levels of training and understanding how to use that and how to recognize that, those are things that we have to put in place to make sure our teachers understand that's not student-generated work. And part of that will be training teachers about what questions to ask students and how to ask questions to get outside of the AI responsiveness of those.
And, you know, the second part of that, I think, is more for you is, you know, what kinds of things are we going to do to help our students learn how to manage AI responsibly? Because there are a huge number of benefits. I'm using it in my day job almost every single day to do all sorts of things. There's a critical thinking process that goes along with it, with figuring out what kind of prompts to use and how to get the information you want. And then to analyze, is the information that it's provided to me something that makes sense? Or do I need to modify it? And so, yeah, and this probably doesn't need an answer right now, but it's something to think about long-term. Just as we started to have to learn how to teach students to use the internet responsibly in general, this is, you know, a whole new world that's been opened up to them. This is, you know, a whole new world that's been opened up to them that we want to guide them in the right path on.
Yeah, and we can't wait because they're ahead of us. Um, it's the truth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, I mean, what I would say is I think the first board action is going to have to be addressing it at the policy level. And then we need to develop some guardrails with kids in the room.
Yes.
About how to use it. Some of the lessons that I've seen are use use AI to draft the answer to the question and then you fact-check it to see if you agree. Like if you would, you know, so so flipping it a little bit to own the knowledge, right? Um, but there are things that people are using right now, like Quizlet, like, you know, apps and things that teach that that are generative in nature. And people don't think of it as artificial intelligence, even though it is.
Yeah.
So policy, principal advisory, student advisory and teacher advisory will have kind of the first toe in and then a module developed for teachers to use. I hope all of that happens in the coming months so that we know exactly kind of where we stand. We are not ready to wide open everything because that invites a lot of risk. Um, but we can't wait for all the adults to be comfortable. We're going to have to establish some guardrails, address it at the policy level and have students at the table when those decisions are made.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim, then Deborah.
Good evening. Um, how is there any national average about how many audiovisual technology support people you need? Because you said one to thirty-seven hundred. Like, is there data behind how many people we really need to serve our students?
There is, but in education, it does vary. You know, so there's there are numbers that that vary so much. Some are one to one thousand, some are one, it it just depends on districts and um different different makeups of districts. But, you know, speaking with various districts across the United States, that's what's happening. You've got a low number to a high ratio. So it's not common, it's not uncommon to have that type of high ratio.
Uh, you mentioned something about enabling remote collaboration. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, so being able to um connect with connect with others outside of the physical building itself. So like if you're being able to log into a classroom remotely, that's basically what I was referencing there.
Okay, because I thought you was referencing like to employees, like being able, enabling remote collaboration, like other workers somewhere.
No, the technology would allow you to log into that space if it need be.
Um, are we using any type of facial recognition software? No?
No.
Okay.
I use it for my phone, but not for instructional purposes.
Okay. Um, in reference to buyback options, is there a reason why we have we are using so many different Lenovo, Apple, Chrome? Is there an opportunity, like, is it one thing that we could use district-wide or that's not wise?
I think that's an instructional decision that we would be able to support. Uh, but at the time of the investment of the devices, it was K three because the early learners typically work better off of the apps and the iPads. And then four twelve, grades four through twelve have a device that's set up with the keyboard and the creation of uh information. So to standardize that K twelve, I think, uh, would have to require some further uh instructional decisioning. And then we will be able to support support it either way.
In reference to our media specialists, now, are there educators, am I correct? They are licensed teachers or?
They are a lot of things.
They are a lot of, okay, I'm not, I'm.
Yeah.
Are they librarians?
They are licensed educators, they're certified licensed.
But I heard him say that media coordinators, are those different people?
Those are your media specialists, media coordinators. You referenced librarian, but media coordinator is.
The current preferred term.
The term. So they're they're the individuals that oversee their school libraries.
Okay. It's not an insult to be a librarian. That requires a lot of training. Um, what kind of training actually does happen for those individuals? And is that a possible pathway in Guilford County?
So that wouldn't technology services, I think, because technology services and media coordinators, we work together. But the district has a library media services department that provides support, training and assistance um in those area work areas.
So you all don't work together?
We do work together, but we don't do anything directly and from technology services with the school-based uh media service, aside from support.
Are we ever thinking about allowing families to purchase any of the devices?
The used devices?
Yeah.
We could potentially look into that um as we get into our buyback options to see what types of uh options we have, you know, based on what the values of those devices are when they become end of life.
Right. Um, and my last question is, is there some kind of like, when we purchase software? Like, that's that's you, right?
That's me.
Okay. When you purchase software, are you thinking about like the upgrading? Because I know once you buy something, then they're like, oh, now we have a new two point O. Now we have three point O. Like, how does that all impact like your budget and things like that? When they offer an upgrade, do we need it? No, we don't? Like, what what happens?
So it's usually recurring. Uh, I think an example of that would be like Microsoft software. You know, it's always constantly updating and 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 having to constantly, on an annual basis, you've got to update. Uh, a lot of the agreements include those updates. Uh, so as you get to your end of term, it may be, okay, we now have to renegotiate what that cost is for that license. But it is negotiated.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Deborah, then Linda.
Okay, first up, let me apologize to my kids. The seventh grader has one of the Chromebooks and the second grader has an iPad. And when they got their hands on them, I went trying to poke holes through the firewalls. So if they were flagged, just know it's mom, not the kids. Uh, that said, I wasn't able to bring up anything, anything, anything. Um, the third, the seventh grader was quite irritated because her favorite music software has a chatroom in it and she can't get in it. I'm like, sorry, you just can't, not changing it. Um, so let, uh, thank you, Diane. You touched on several of the things that I wanted to ask. Um, I do wanted to know, this report that you're working on now, will that have an estimate in it about um cost replacement for the extended warranty for another year?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, good. Um, we talked about the buybacks and potentials for family to buy. Are we concerned here in Guilford County schools about being able to purchase licensing software updates and things like that? Because you mentioned other districts are.
Uh, because we did not use Esser funds to purchase software. You know, a lot of districts purchase people, they purchase different things. So we did direct ours toward devices. So we don't have that same concern.
We could have, I will say, some instructional resources, like libraries of tools that are on the academic side that people will feel. Um, there are, and and so the communication planning around that really matters. But there are some expensive tools that we are able to supplement remote instruction with that we will not be able to afford past the Esser cliff.
All right, let's get to it.
But not like the software that keeps us safe and the device is working. That's planned.
The Google platform is free, right? Like Google, Google Docs, things like that. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to make sure that is understood when we talk about the demand we place on these devices and the the phrasing in my head is injury pattern, but that's not right. The damage, maybe the damage percentage that we're seeing is that the kids have the option, if I'm not mistaken, to hold on to these devices year round if they need summer access, correct? So these things go home with these kids. And like my second grader is high impact. Uh, we've had talks about that iPad, not going to go there. Um, but they are used year round for many students who would not have device access otherwise. And so when we talk about the repair percentages, we have to look at the fact that this is not just school instructional time that these kids are using this for. And so to that end, is this a sustainable fund that we have? This repair uh the repair support for the devices and replacement support for power cords and accessories, things to that end that are that are high use and high damage? We have a fund in place for that.
So that life cycle replacement plan will give us exactly what we will need and what we will be able to project on an annual basis. Uh, and that'll be inclusive of uh our end of year inventory and then being able to determine exactly where we are. And I look forward to getting that answer as well.
Yeah, I'm glad you are because it it makes me cringe. But, okay, good. So we'll have that number. And there again, that's not something that we're looking for out of the federal dollars. That's looking for out of our regular annual budget.
Correct.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Um, you know, technology has a lot of positives, but it also can come with some concerns. Um, you know, what I would like to know is what percentage is the devices being used in the classroom? In K through three, is it, are we using them thirty percent of the time? Are we using fifty percent of the time? Are we using them sixty percent of the time? And that same projection in at every level. Because, you know, I'm old, okay? And that GPS, I like it, okay? But I'm losing skills by you being dependent on it. Do you see what I'm saying? We're losing, our children need to do math in their head, all right? They need to know those multiplication. They need to be able to add in their head. They need to do that. And the more that we allow them to depend on the computer, the the calculator. You know, when the technology grid goes down, okay? Are we going to have individuals with the skill sets to do it without the without the aid? Are we going to have kids that can write and know grammar without using? Because these are crutches, okay? All this technology is a crutch. It provides great information. But what worries me is the amount that we're using it, all right? Because it also makes us stupid, okay? It can make you, you lose that, when the grid goes down. We need these kids to have that core ability in their heads, okay? So, you know, and AI again is another thing that's going to give them crutches and aid them to do a lot of work that they really should be doing their, you can't learn something without doing it, okay? You cannot learn something without doing it. So if they become so dependent, and it's getting easier and easier and easier. So, you know, I want to make sure that our critical thinking, our analysis, that our kids are still learning that when all this stuff comes in. I mean, you know, people are talking about getting phones. There are schools that are taking phones out of the schools because they are so distracting. Um, and I'm kind of, because it is, that you they get addicted to this. And I'm really concerned about our K through three. You know, how much are we, how much are we we depending on that? I do hear parents say, you know, the teachers are too dependent on it. And they're and kids, and all kids learn differently, all right? And we we learn that with remote learning, right? That our kids don't do as well with remote learning. So what my point is, is technology is escalating out of control, pretty much. I mean, it's growing so fast, it we can't keep up with it. And I think we need to make sure that we're focusing back on maintaining that our children are learning the basics. I mean, when I get a child and they don't know the multiplication table, I'm concerned. When they can't do addition and subtraction in their head, that's concerning. When they don't know what a noun and a verb is, when they don't know how to, that they should capitalize an I and they're in in middle school, that's concerning, all right? Because some, there's always that opportunity that that computer is not going to be there. That phone is not going to be there or if something happens. So my point is, I think it's great, I'm a technology girl. Uh, that was my job, okay? But I think we need to keep focus on our job is for them to be critical thinkers, not the computer to be a critical thinker, not the computer to do all the work for them, but for them to be able to think critically, them to be able to analyze, them to be able to do the math without the assistance of all this technology. So I just want to make sure we keep that focus there. Technology is great, but I I just want to pull it back just a little bit. And so we need to remember what the focus is. It is for them to learn and understand and retain that knowledge without the aid of the computer.
Thank you. Oh, Betty?
At the beginning um of school, when we receive the iPads, it was a lot of overheating of the iPads. So what would you say would be the major uh maintenance problem?
That could come from a variety of uh causes. It could be the storage over the summer, um, making sure that the batteries are charged appropriately. Um, things that we really want to continue to work with our media coordinators with in preparation for the new school year. And if the devices are defective, making sure that we're getting them out and getting the students a new device uh to continue with.
Okay, but when you send them back for repair, um, what would you say your major problem is?
It's like the Chromebooks are the biggest uh repair issues. Typically, the iPads haven't given us much damage uh rates behind that. But the question, what it is, it's usually the glass that breaks on the iPad.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
One follow-up, it came to me as we're sitting here talking about some of the security issues. When I had computers in my classroom, I loved this program called Net Support. With Net Support, I could pull up every one of my students' computer screens. I knew exactly what they were doing. I could control what they did. I could take over their computer if I needed to, stop anything that I did not want. With the devices, when we sent the kids home, we lost that. As that came back for the individual devices for the students themselves, where the teacher in the classroom has some control over the devices in the classroom.
Yes, there are classroom management software. Uh, as a former CTE teacher in a lab, I used that all day, every day. So when when they went home, yes, you couldn't control it to that extent, but the filter did kick in place. But then when they come back to school, teachers still have that same level of uh authority over their devices. It's a, it's a good one.
Thank you, Dr. Slade. All right, we are now at committee reports. I'll turn to Board Member Diane Bellamy's call for a um report um from the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our March twenty, uh, March sixth meeting, the Policy Committee voted to send seven policies uh recommendations out for thirty-day comment uh from the period of March the nineteenth to April eighteenth. The policy revisions we are proposing are recommended to reflect reviews of current of recent changes in state law and recommendations from legal counsel. First, policy thirteen eleven slash four zero zero three. Parent notification withholding consent has been updated based on state law reg uh regarding protected information surveys and mental health services. Next, we propose a new policy, twenty-three ten, public participation at board meetings. This new policy was drafted based on this board's current process of conducting the public comment period at our board meetings. The policy draft addresses issues like meeting decorum to ensure our meetings are respectful for all participants. The revision of policy forty forty slash seventy-three ten, staff-student relations is recommended to clarify restrictions on staff engagement with students via personal social media. It has also been updated to reflect a change to state law regarding the reporting of employee misconduct to the State Board of Education. Policy forty-one ten, immunization and health requirements has been revised to conform to a minor change to state law eliminating the Governor's Commission on Early Childhood Vision Care. The revision of policy seventy-one hundred, recruitment and selection of personnel is recommended to uh adjust the background check renewal timeline for early childhood workers based on state law. This policy has also been revised to clarify the definition of relative for the purpose of ethic ex ethics in hiring and supervision in the district. And then finally, policy seventy-one thirty licensure has been revised to reflect a. licensure has been revised to reflect a new feature of state law that allows the district to hire military personnel or spouses who have been stationed in North Carolina and who have a valid educator's license in another state. As a reminder, you can view the revisions in detail in the attachment to the Policy Committee Report in the Board Agenda, and they will be featured on GCS website and social media channels after this meeting. These policy recommendations will come back to the Board for discussion at our May meeting after the public has had a chance to give input. We had no action items for tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are now at Board Member Comments. And Ms. Jenkins, I'll start with you.
Thank you. First of all, great presentation, Dr. Slade. Really enjoyed that. I'd like to thank Vandelia Elementary School for allowing me to participate in the early morning, 7 o'clock bus and car riders pickup. Dr. Stanky did a presentation at Delly High School. I think it was called Social and Emotional Learning. That program was absolutely phenomenal, and all your workers did a great job. And you can tell you really have a team. To Ms. Greensboro's team who has left, I appreciate her talking about the service learning component because that's one of the items that I'll probably talk about next month at our meeting because there is inconsistency there as it relates to the students logging in hours and also getting credit for their hours. And at the meeting that I attended last week, it was a lot of talk, that is, the Council of Great City Schools, a lot of talk about student performance and ESSA money. And a lot of the schools use that money with programs, staff, and tutoring. But you know Greensboro had to brag on what we done as far as the high dose of tutoring and the learning hub. So we was not on stage, but I can tell you, almost everybody there knew that we was on our point also because we shared that with everyone we knew. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, thank you. Pass week, man, I had some fun elementary kids. And I'm a high school person, so being with elementary kids is kind of a whole different territory. Green Eggs and Ham. If you really want to have fun, first graders, read Green Eggs and Ham. I got privileged to read that to several classes. At another school, I had a privilege of reading Captain Attraction. And I will say it was another kindergarten, first grade book, but it was to a fifth grade class. That's tough. That's tough, trying to get them interested in reading that. But we had a good time, we struggled through it. I would have chosen a different book. I questioned the book that they gave me, but they said, "It's what we have." But I made it through it. Bond funds coming up. Guilford County, we need to start looking at the interest that we are going to be paying on bond funds. We need to come up with a different option for that interest in being able to fund our bonds a different way than what we are funding them. Because right now, the public needs to know we are saving money up in Guilford County to pay the interest on the bonds for the years when we have more interest than we have revenue coming in. So we really need to look at that. I paid my house off, and I paid my house off because I paid the principal. I paid my truck off because I paid the principal. And I actually got money back because I paid it off early. And those are things that we need to look at in Guilford County is saving money. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, congratulations and shout out to all our social workers. One that's dear to my heart is my own daughter, Adanaiah Shabazz, who is a therapist and has her own independent business. So shout out to social workers, we definitely need you. And we're working on meeting the national average in North Carolina. That is one of our initiatives in our legislative agenda as well. I also attended the Council of Great City Schools convening. We did hear from the Secretary of Education as well. And we heard from Dr. Watlington, who formerly, of course, was with Guilford County, paired off with the superintendent from Winston-Salem, excuse me, Forsyth County as well. And they did an excellent job, so it felt like North Carolina was just being represented, even though we know Tony is in Philadelphia. We know he's also doing some great work there as well. And we did hear, you know, a lot about ESSA dollars and so many other districts are still scrambling to spend that money. And we were really baffled by that. And yes, we did brag about the fact that we don't have that problem. We know what to do with money when we get it in Guilford County. And we understand that it's temporary money, and we try to be very wise about temporary dollars that are hard to replace. Because I don't think we're getting another round of ESSA dollars. At least, that doesn't seem like it's coming out of the, out of the White House. I also had the opportunity to read to Jefferson Elementary students. I had a great time in those classrooms. And Stokesdale's for their Read to Achieve. And Southwest Elementary did their Black History Celebration as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Okay. First of all, this is, this is going to be hard for me to say, but congratulations to North Carolina State for winning the ACC and Go Hills in the, in the NCAA. This is going to be hard because I really, you know, my, my, I gotta hold my mule. As a black woman who grew up in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, and 80s, and to the 21st century, you cannot simplify the struggle of African-Americans to one woman or two women who, oh, God bless them to live to be 114. We struggled. We still deal with racism, sexism, and some of the other isms, ageism even. So we can't hide behind God by saying that, "Oh, God will make it all right." Because if he did, we wouldn't have had the mistake with Adam and Eve in the Garden of Eden. So I think that for us to sit silently and say nothing when people are trying to belittle the struggles of every minority group that has ever come to this country, and including the group that was here before folks decided to come and take their land. We cannot sit silently and just let one person's opinion cloud the truth. I'm a living example of what it took to fight. I went to desegregated schools and was treated horribly, but we made it because we are just as strong as any other people. But don't deny us what we went through. I want to thank the NCAE for allowing me to be a author and presenter at their Reading Across America event on last Saturday at the Greensboro Public Library. And particular thanks to Kenya Donelson for inviting me. We had a good time. And if you want to see what we did, just go to Facebook. Congratulations to Triangle Lake for, Montessori, for having a successful career day. I was impressed with the diversity of careers. You know, sometimes we think we're only supposed to show the kids the certain careers, but they had every kind of career, including a food truck that had a chef. And so I was very impressed with, with their diversity of career opportunities for our children because you don't have to go work for somebody. You can work for yourself. To the, to all the, all of the persons who are celebrating various religious holidays over this, this next season, I just want to say blessings to you. I want to stress that I hope that we have a restful and safe spring break and that we will be ready to prepare to come back and get these last two and a half months of 2024 under our belt. And I'm looking forward to the celebration of the class of 2024. And then lastly, I want to, and Dr. Oakley, I don't remember the schools, but at the Piedmont Triad Education Consortium, want to just say kudos, I know Kern Academy was one.
And Shady Brook.
Okay, so congratulations to our schools. I think anytime we can have our individual schools or the school district recognize for the good work that we do. Public school, public schools are important. And we need to keep emphasizing that, particularly in this election year, that we need to have the funding, we need to have the manpower, we need to have the support of parents and community to make public schools continue to work. I am a product of public school, and I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Happy Women's History Month to everybody. It is, no offense to any of the men in the room, but it's so nice to look around this room and see so many strong women from such a variety of backgrounds and industries and ages and races and all the things really help contributing to Guilford County schools. And I encourage people to go out and find a woman and ask them what makes them amazing. Because we have so many just fantastic people in our community. And so that's all I got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynda.
I want to be brief, but it is kind of shocking to me with the warm weather coming in, how, how short our time is before we're going to be in the EOGs and all that wonderful stuff. So, you know, I want to tell everybody, take the time over the spring break, get refreshed and recharged, and try to come back strong to finish out this year amazingly. The district's doing great work, and I think we can finish strong. So stick with us, get re-energized, and come back ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor?
As has already been mentioned by several of my colleagues, what is better than a Community Reader Day in this work that we do? I had to cancel on Lindley due to a family need. Please invite me back. But it was a gift to be at Jefferson Elementary, and I want to thank the administrators, teachers, and staff there. Want to shout out good friend and dynamic school counselor, Melissa Norman. I got to see in action for just a few minutes without disrupting too much. And I was just completely taken again by the skill and the passion and precision of what our educators do. I was with a wonderful group of second graders, which is the age of my youngest child, and I read a book that she loves entitled, "Your Name Is a Song", by Jamila Tompkins Bigelow. Briefly, this book tells the story of a little girl who has had a terrible first day of school because, quote, "No one could say my name. It got stuck in their mouths." And so her compassionate and understanding mama teaches her that, as the title suggests, "Her name is a song." It's one that should be said with rhythm, should be sung with emotion. And she says that she should, should say it that way herself. Cora Jalamusso. Only her name is not the only one that is a song. Rather, every single name is a song. She doesn't want to go back to school the next day, though, but she realizes she needs to because she has songs to teach. And she finds her voice, and she sings out not only her own name, but the names of everyone in her class. And she helps them to see the beauty and the musicality of every single one of their names. And then we finish this book, and every child seated on the carpet in that second grade class said their name. And some of them sang it out. Teacher McGee was there, the music teacher at Jefferson, who was sitting in class, and he suggested that in an upcoming music class, they should work on turning their names into music. Reminded me of my own elementary school music teacher mother who used to delight us as children by sharing the range of names and the corresponding stories among her students. Because our schools are a place that reflect and amplify and celebrate and value this particular quality that is so core to what community means: diversity. Diversity is not something we simply admire or passively appreciate. We have to work for it. We have to educate, we have to advocate, we have to reckon with our past and our present. And diversity doesn't mean much at all unless it's tied to justice or to use other language also used here tonight if it is not held together with efforts of equity and inclusion. So I want to take occasion to celebrate the work of our DEI staff this evening. Their work is so vital. Want to celebrate our leadership, our superintendent, who has made this a named priority and continues to use her power to that end. And I want to celebrate other community organizers and leaders, especially some of my fellow board members here. I want to thank Board Member Bellamy Small for her comments tonight and the way she continues to teach us, and so many others who have led the way in these efforts in our schools and our community, insisting on the pursuit of equity for students of all races, ethnicities, backgrounds, sexualities, and gender identities. And as that work continues, I do want to observe briefly that I was encouraged this month to see some news out of my home state of Florida. That has not been the place that I have looked for good news in education recently. But a court has prompted the state of Florida to agree to a settlement over the controversial so-called Don't Say Gay Bill, the Parental Rights in Education Act of 2022 that was passed by lawmakers and signed into law by Governor Ron DeSantis. And this recent ruling is significant because it places some parameters and clarity around this legislation. While it doesn't reverse it, it does allow more flexibility than originally was feared. The ruling says, for instance, that the statute leaves teachers free to respond if students discuss their identities or family life, to provide grades and feedback if a student chooses LGBTQ identity as an essay topic, and to answer questions about their own families. In addition, the law doesn't prohibit references in literature to a gay or transgender person or to a same-sex couple. And some see this as a signal of a shift away from the kind of legislation and targeted efforts like this, which I hope has implications for our state level with its own parents' rights Don't Say Gay Bill of 2023. We know that many in our state and many in our community are advocating against such efforts and legislation. And I want to commend you activists and community leaders and pledge to support, again, with whatever power I have, and to generally lift up, again, the chance we have in this system to celebrate and support all of our students and their various identities, to say their names and to celebrate the beauty of all of their lives.
I should have let you be the closing comment. Thank you for your eloquence in saying everything that I wanted to say. And also, Board Member Bellamy Small, I just feel so unsettled addressing this as the United States has the highest maternal death rate in the industrialized world. And that Guilford County has the highest maternal and infant death rate in the state of North Carolina to suggest that two people who've had the gift of living a long life are the evidence that racism, racism, and not bigotry, but racial and ethnic disparities in healthcare doesn't exist, would be like me saying that the millions of students that haven't been bullied, that bullying isn't a problem, or the millions of people that haven't been victims of violent crime. I know Mr. Moore would probably turn over in his chair over there if I suggested that violent crime isn't a problem. To look at an example and suggest that such a trend and such a pattern doesn't exist is reckless and dangerous. One of the stories that really, you know, there's so many that resonate with me, but Kira Johnson was a very successful married African-American woman that was at Cedar Sinai giving birth to another child. Her husband was there with her, and, you know, as he's celebrating the birth of their son and posting things on social media, he notices that there's blood in her catheter. And he calls and says, "Hey, is there, is this, is this usual? Is this normal?" And they're like, "We'll be in there soon, you know, just, we'll, we'll come check it out." And she was allowed to bleed internally for 10 hours. By the time someone finally came in to check on her and realized that there was something serious going on, as they're wheeling her back to the double doors, they tell her husband, Charles Johnson, who's the son of Glenda Hatchett, who was a famous judge on television. She's at Cedar Sinai, one of the most well-resourced hospitals in this country, speaks multiple languages, and had several businesses. I want to say was educated and married again. As they're wheeling her into the emergency room, they're just like, "It's probably nothing, we'll be out soon." And she didn't come out. So instead of suggesting that this isn't a problem, maybe we should be asking, "Why is it a problem? Why are some people not believed or not listened to?" Guilford County schools is the home to the majority of African-American kids that go to school in this, in this county. And there's not one indicator of school achievement where they're not at the bottom. Now, some of you might think it's because of genetics or biology or science or some intellectual deficits. But I don't believe that, and many of us don't believe that. And we will continue to support the offices and the leadership in this district that is curious and that want to... that is curious and that wants to resolve that for once. When, when the, the, the women who are living long lives were mentioned, they could not, if they lived in Greensboro, they couldn't be treated at Cone Hospital. They couldn't live in Irving Park or Fisher Park. They couldn't attend the school system here. They couldn't bank in certain banks. They couldn't play golf at the golf course. You name one public institution where they had access to. So it's great that that's over, but it didn't end just because people woke up and said, "You know what? This isn't nice." You know, after a couple of centuries of slavery and Jim Crow, it didn't end because people said, "It's wrong." It ended because people fought to address these inequities like they're fighting, like we're fighting today and will continue to do so. So I applaud the district and the DEI office and every person in this room that is committed to helping to address those historical events and decisions that we are still living with today. And with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to put something in the minutes before we do, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. In compliance with the Open Meetings Law, the Board announces the conclusion of a settlement agreement in the matter of Jane Does one and two versus the Guilford County Board of Education at AL on behalf of the Board. The Board's insurer agreed to pay $3 million in settlement of these claims, and the case is now closed.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for being here.